Seven o'clock, I'd like to bring this meeting of the Germantown Trustees to order. Could you all rise and say, for pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the republic which stands our nation under, and to the full liberty of justice. Mr. Heaton, can we have a roll call, please?
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Cross here, Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
Mr. Potter here. All trustees are present. Thank you, Mark.
Now it's time for visitor comments. If you want to make a comment, please come up to the stadium podium and state your name and address the first time, then state your name after you're ready. Who would like to go first? Not in all rush, happy to come back.
Get it over with, right? Patricia Lepla, 6780 Farmer's Old Germantown Pike. So I'm here concerning the electricity aggregation program and some concerns I have about it, some questions I have about it, some confusion, I think, that not just me, but some other residents with solar have. And I talked to, well, first I talked to Archer, so I have the letter that came that is an opt-out rather than an opt-in. So you have to know about the program and what it's going to do, and you as a resident have to opt out or else you're in it, right? So that's the first thing. So I called Archer and the first comment I got from the woman who answered the telephone was, "Oh, if you have solar, we need to get you opted out." That's the first thing she said to me. So I thought, okay, I need to get some information, so I called and talked to Mark. And Mark told me that yes, if you had solar, that you had to opt out of the program. I've been doing some research on it, trying to figure this out because I know I'm not the only one with, we are not the only one with solar in the township. And so I kind of drove around the township and looked, and I know there are at least seven other residents in the township. And I made phone calls to some of them, and all but two of them called me back and said they hadn't gotten a letter, they didn't know if they'd gotten a letter, they had no information about it. And so my first concern is the township, I feel like that was the township's responsibility to let these people know if there's a program that's going, that's going to affect them and could affect them negatively if that's, you know, if that's what indeed is going to happen. And those people don't even know that they're about to opt into a program that's going to cost them money. That's, that's one of my concerns. The next thing I did is today, I decided to call Archer back and just, I thought, okay, the person I talked to on the phone was probably a person who was just answering the telephone and might not know exactly what the program is. So I did talk to that woman for a few minutes and she said, "You know what? I need to, I need to get you to somebody else because I can't answer your questions." So my questions were, "What's my AES bill going to look like?" So right now, what happens is I get a list of what kilowatts I used, I get a list of what my solar produced, and then I have a net of what my bill actually is. And that's the part that I produce, AES currently pays me at us, I'm sorry, but at the same rate of what they charge, right? So when, when I'm producing less during the winter, when I'm using my furnace, I produce less, then I'm paying a lot more. When, in the summertime, it's mostly even or I produce more and I have a carryover. AES allows a carryover from month to month so that it will go into the fall without me paying electric bill. Okay, so I spoke with a man named Andrew at Archer and I had a lengthy conversation with him, and he told me they do provide net metering. And I said, "That's interesting because we understand from, like, you guys' minutes in March that you said solar residents, we're going to have to opt out of the program." Their person that I talked to on the phone at first said, "Oh, if you have solar, no, not even any questions asked, you have to opt out of the program." This person said, "Well, no," and he started to ask me questions about how much we produced, how much, you know, at different times. He started talking to me about I could opt in and opt out. So during the summer months, I could opt out and go with AES. During the winter months, when I knew I was going to have more, I could opt back in. And I said, "Well, so the net metering part comes in where if I produce more and I've got a carryover from AES, what happens? You know, what happens to that?" And he said, "Oh, we, we provide net metering." And I said, "Well, that's really interesting because that is not the information that I'm getting."
No, that wasn't the information we got.
So my second thing is, we would like that in writing from somebody. I can't just take that on the, and we've got just till the 15th here to opt out of this program. And again, when I talk to these other residents, they're, they're going like, "I don't even know what you're talking about." You know, they, they're like, "I don't remember ever getting a letter." Sometimes, you know, those letters come from IGS and Clean Choice Energy, and you just think, okay, it's somebody trying to get me off of AES and, you know, you, you were told as a, as a solar customer that, no, you have to be with AES because they're the only ones that will buy back your solar, right? So that's, I think those people were like, "Oh, this doesn't affect me." But it is going to affect them if they opt, if they unintentionally are in that program. So that's, that's concern. So I also need to know, what is their specific net metering policy? Because after he said they do produce, they're providing that metering, it's like, okay, is that the same as what AES provides? Is it the same that, you know? We, we need that information in writing because, you know, if I all of a sudden get a bill, you know, we opt in or whatever, and we get a bill and they say, "Well, we told you that, you know, that's not what our policy is." So we need something in writing from that company that's going to say, "This is what we're providing. This is how much you're going to be paying." And the other thing that, when I started looking at the AES bill, it's like, what are the supplier fees? Are the supplier fees the same as what AES supplier fees are? You have a broker that you signed that agreement with. It says on the back of this here that broker fees and supplier fees are included in my bill. But nowhere does it say what that is. So, I mean, it's kind of like, you know, you get a bill from somebody and it's like, here's your electric, that's the supplier fee, here's the delivery fee. We all know that AES charges a delivery fee, you know, for their lines. And then you've got some other things. It's kind of like your phone bill or your, you know, cable bill. You've got this line and this line, and these are like just fees in general. I think we all need to understand, what are those fees? So that we know when we're, you know, we all, we voted on this aggregation, including your solar customers voted on that to get the aggregation. And I just feel like the people that have solar on their homes deserve the answers so that we know what we're paying, what we're not paying. It's just, if, if I'm the only one here asking questions and I've contacted these other people and they don't have any idea what's going on, then we just haven't been informed. So, let's see. That's it. Oh, two, just two other things that we need to understand is that a couple of the residents think that they are on some kind of contract. And so they think, so I understand that if you have opted, so suppose you're not on the standard contract with AES and you've chosen IGS or Clean Choice Energy, you probably didn't get a letter because you, yes. So, but if you're a solar customer, you shouldn't be on one of those. You should be with AES. But a couple of the residents think that they are, and they don't think they have to do anything. So that's, you know, I think, I think they need to know.
Do we have any way of knowing too, everybody in the township that owns solar, do we?
No, and you probably, well, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't either.
I mean, you know, but I can give you the names of the people that I drove around and I can see it on there. And I just think they need to know, they better call.
Is this something that Trebell, I mean, we had, we're kind of going through Trebell.
Yes.
In your own, and Trebell told us what, what we told you.
Right.
And at that time, when they told us that, they did not knew who, know who the supplier was going to be. And we did not know it was going to be Archer till recently.
Right.
So there's going to be a little bit of figuring this out.
I do. And so I, I, I do, I agree with you.
So we're.
I think Trebell, they're the people, they, you know.
That's what we hired him for.
I, I know. And so that's, leads me to just one more question, is that I know Mark told me that Archer, the contract is from May to May. What about the contract with Trebell?
Contract with Trebell, I'm just, it's three years.
Because I feel like, I mean, this, this gentleman at Archer was very helpful. Tried to give me lots of information, but I agree with you that that broker is the one that needs to be answering the questions, the residents, so.
I'm surprised that the Archer said he could get that metering.
Me too.
Because that's the first time I've heard that, perfect.
Didn't get him to send you something in writing, did you?
But I know who he is.
That's good, okay. Email it, email it.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, because.
Basically, when I, I talked to Trebell, Joe Garrett, who's a representative, and I've talked to Archer, and according to Trebell, they really haven't run into this before with solar, solar people with panels. Which is not an excuse, but to what.
I'm sorry, haven't run into it, meaning what?
Meaning people brought it up as far as people that have solar panels. So as far as that metering and all that, which, you know, it's kind of hard to believe, but yes.
I, I agree, that's hard to believe.
I just, if I remember him right, he was just saying that you was, they was going to have to stay on AES and continue your net metering with them.
Basically, the, and this.
That's what I was.
Kind of goes back, Miami Township, their, their, their aggregation program went through Trebell too. And at the time, and this has been a year ago, they opted out everyone with solar who had net metering. In the meantime, the PUCO said you can't do that. You have to allow them to make that decision. So what, talking to Trebell and Archer, they got together a solar metering communication. It kind of says the same thing. You basically have to look at how much you're producing, how much credit you're getting. If you're not producing that much and you're not getting, you know, you're not having those zero-month bills, then it may be worthwhile to, to stay in the, with the program with the Lord. Overrating.
Well, and if they're paying you back, that, that makes sense to me too. But I found it interesting that this man was telling me you can go in and out, in, in and out.
Well, see, I, I don't know about that because you'd have to figure, you can go in and out as far as Archer any time. But to go back and, you say, you go back into AES.
Yes. So that's my next call. I tried to get ahold of somebody today from AES and I couldn't because he seemed to think that that was not a problem, that you just have to give them enough lead time that, because, you know, they, it takes a, like, a month of the bill to go through to get to the, you know, on one versus the other.
Attention in the fall of how much you're getting back.
Exactly. Because that was my concern is like, if in September, I've got this credit, what, what happens to that?
You'll just have to wait till you run out of your.
Exactly. I know, that's right. But I never heard that before. And everything I've read doesn't talk about you being able to go in and out of a program like that. So I just, I just think we need some answers. And I agree that Trebell is the one who needs to give us those answers.
And you've been in contact with Joe here recently?
Yeah, I have, like I say. So, so this is what we got, the Germantown Township Solar Net Meter Communication. And it basically says what we've talked about is that, you know, if you produce more than you, than you use on the, then you should opt out so to continue to get that credit from AES. I, the wrench in the program, wrench in the works is when Archer says that you can, they can do net metering.
I mean, and that's what he said.
You know, I'll have to.
And his name is Andrew. I did not get his last name, but I don't think it's a very big company. I can't imagine that they have very many Andrews that she could go to because I think it's a pretty small company.
So this, the, the solar net metering communication is, we put that on our Facebook page, so if you want to read that.
Okay. Also, I want to log on our website. Okay.
Would you like to take a copy home?
That would be, would be great.
I got, I got two copies, so if you're going to take one of these, sure.
I just pulled Trebell. Dr. Cross, it is for five years.
Five, okay, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'll, I'll call Andrew tomorrow and see if I can find it. Yeah, I'll see him first. I could say, because it's, it was pretty self-evident when Archer couldn't give you any net metering. But now since that, since he said that, it makes the whole thing much more complicated. So that's, that's the best I can break something.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Don Daryl. I live at 6793 Diamond Mill Road, Germantown Township. And I know a few of you. And I've talked with Shannon a while back, but not recently. We're here because we believe there's a significant zoning violation occurring at 6590 Diamond Mill Road. We've, when he first put the building up, we were wondering what he was doing, but then we saw some evidence that he was intending to put his business up there, which happens to be Germantown Oil Company. Couple of times, I believe, we've approached him and told him, "Don't do it." Is that correct?
Yeah, that's because, basically, I think, you, you know, what happened is, you know, he would, he would try to get, move some of his trucks up there, and when you guys complained about it, he went back and parked them down to Marathon.
Right.
I didn't really follow up on that. Now, it seems like he's doing it all the time.
Well, now, no, now, he's moved all of his business up. He's moved everything he's got, moved up there. But once we saw that we were taking pictures of him and like that, he moved a truck down there so he can still say he's there. But he's running a business out of what was supposed to be storage of farm equipment. I didn't see any farm equipment. Everything seems to be Germantown Oil. There are tankers, and there are tankers full of combustible material, not necessarily flammable, but combustible. It's either diesel or oil that he's dealing with. There's a pretty dangerous event when his trucks come in, come out of his property because where that driveway is, when you're coming up from Germantown on Diamond Mill, there's a dip. For a brief moment, you don't see them. And when you do see them, they're doing 50, 55 mile an hour. And the trucks, we, we had some real close accidents so far. But that's, we'll talk about that as one concern. Number two, for me, is he's up there without an environmental study, a lot of hazmat study, without a fire danger study. What the water well impact in our area would be if he has a problem. He's got few, diesel fuel and oil in large quantities in his tankers. He's, he's not emptying them. They're up there. So whatever's in them is in the tanks. And those trucks, we think they're about 3,000 to 4,000 gallon capacity. But they're completely moved now, in now, and I'm pretty sure he's going to say, "Hey, possession's nine tenths along. Been here." Well, he hasn't been here that long, but he's been here. All right.
I've kind of heard all this, which is, go ahead.
Okay. Is that what you've heard from him?
No, I've heard from him, which is good, yeah.
So, but I want everybody to know the danger that we're coming in under, right? Because he's been hiding his vehicles. It was, he was playing cat and mouse with us for a while. If we drove by, all the trucks would be inside by the time we turn around and come back. And I do have pictures that can validate that he's running his business out of there. I have a number of complaint forms filled out from neighbors, and there'll be more because I visited people. Okay, yeah. I've visited people down on Weaver Road. And once they found out what was going on, they're going, "Oh, heck, I mean, we're down lower than he is too. He's up on top, the aquifer in our area." So my nightmare, the one that keeps me up at night, is if they make a mistake and have a fire, there'll be no recourse but to put foam on those fires. As we all know, foam is extremely toxic and will seep in and will basically screw up the water. So there's a large portion of Beaver that's not on water. And from Diamond Mill, from that top of that hill down to, well, there comes Cherry. I don't think anybody's on, there might be a couple that are on water, but most of the people are not. The other thing that makes us incredibly nervous is the water comes running right down Diamond Mill, gets both ditches on both sides, comes past my property, past his property, and takes a hard right, goes down into the gulch, straight to Little Twin. Little Twin, it goes to Twin Creek. So Germantown could have a big problem. And what we're doing now is we're the canary in the mine. We're telling you, there's a problem. And if you ignore it, you're ignoring its your own risk. Township is going to be incredibly. Everything you're trying to do is draw people to Germantown, Germantown Township. Well, that will stop that. You get another, you know, Palestine, or you get another Flint. Just envision pitchforks and torches coming your way.
So is all that on your complaint forms?
Most of it. He's got some things, he's going to tell you what I missed. I'm going to give these to Shannon.
Donna.
Ashana.
Okay.
You know, but like Jeff, I'm sorry, Mike Moore, 6803 Diamond Mill. Yes, sir, thank you. We're just having the same issue. I mean, we have way too much activity up there. The road is a danger zone. Top of that hill, as Jeff said, it's a blind spot. If you trap that hill, off the hill, you're going to be right into the back of them. I've personally seen two accidents almost take place. The tanker's coming in, he'll stop the tankers and back, back into the driveway, stop dead at a 55 and backing in. We've just recently have pictures of inside the building there with all the trucks located in there. They're pumping oil from truck to truck. Unfortunately, we didn't have good shots of that, but the pictures show you can see the people standing in there. And there's really just no care. I mean, it is his business. He's moved in, as Jeff said. And tonight, even as I came by tonight, the guys up there, they see my truck come by anyway because they know who I am. They know I'm the one that's complaining.
What's, what's the daily routine for them as far as when they bring the trucks in, when they?
Five to 6 a.m., they leave out, trucks leave out. All the guys will pull in with their cars, park them behind the building, line them up so you can't see the cars from the road. Tankers come out, they'll leave with the tankers to make their runs. 5:30 to 6:30, the trucks start coming back in. You can see them both by our house, and we just follow them up, take photos.
Yeah, so at 5:30, 6:30 p.m., obviously.
Into the evening. And.
So this is, this is clearly a violation because again, like I said, when he got built that barn, he got ag exempt.
Exactly, exactly right.
And he said he was going to just put, you know.
Farm equipment.
Farm equipment.
I haven't seen a tractor in there yet, or a harvester.
So the, the property is zoned agricultural, which is not zoned for a truck terminal, which is basically what he would consider.
Right.
To, to get that, to allow that, you would have to rezone it in I-2, I think it's an I-2 district, allow truck terminals. So, which I'm sure would probably never pass as far as rezoning. I mean, what, what we can do, I've got the documentation before, I really didn't have any pictures, I think, because they weren't doing it often enough. Every time I'd go by in the afternoon, would find nobody was there.
Right, well, yeah, I did include for the transfer station down at Marathon.
Um, yeah.
Tell me your story.
Yeah, they're in the process of moving all that out. They're pumping tanks, smaller tanks, inside the bigger vessels, back and forth feeding them. And they're in the process of moving that out of the, or out of the gas station location.
Well, 64,000, another question is, that's a transfer station that works for the big tank underground. Have they planned on putting an underground tank yet?
Yeah.
And do they have to get a permit to do that?
I think our goal is to, you know, give them the violation to see if they follow through. And I doubt that he's going to, which is going to probably to some sort of litigation. I had, the last time we talked about this was actually about a year ago. And he was trying to, you know, so I have actually a violation that is pretty much done from back then. So our goal will be to send that to him, see a follow-up, and then if he does not comply, then then we'll basically talk to our legal representative at the prosecutor's office and see what the next steps are.
You talked a whole, I didn't hear that.
Oh, we'll talk, if he doesn't comply, which I kind of doubt he will, I don't see that happening. I don't know the guy, but anyway, so, so we'll, if he doesn't comply, then we'll have to talk to our legal representative at the prosecutor's office, who we consult with, to see what the next steps are. Is, you can actually, they can be charged with a misdemeanor and up to $500 a day fine, what they're doing.
So it's getting ready for that.
I'm afraid there's going to be an accident. I mean, that's what we're worried for any moment.
Yes.
And Diamond Mill, as they come out of the S curves there, they fly up that hill. That's problems.
Has there been any police reports with problems lately?
Okay, yeah, there was a year ago.
There was a year ago, yeah.
When they first started playing with it.
Right.
And then they ducked, and they stayed out away, and giveaway, my mouth is dry, the giveaway was they put small gravel in to make it smoother for them. That was the first sign that they were getting ready to do something. Fair enough, here they come.
So what the game plan will be, we finish the, finish the notice of violation, send that to him and see if he complies. If he doesn't, then we'll talk to her, what our next steps are going to be. So hopefully.
I like that fine part because I think he'll understand that.
Most people, I think, would be, yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming in again. Thanks for the pictures. That's kind of the missing point that we didn't have before. These are very good ones. It shows exactly what he's doing. So again.
Thank you for your time.
In the meantime, pray we don't have a fire up here. Next.
I was going to tag on her, so I'll get that.
Go ahead, Lee, come on.
Thank you. Good to see you guys. I looked quickly at that net metering communication that you just handed. Um, I looked quickly at that net metering communication that you just handed Patty. And again, Gary Lepus, sixty-seven eighty, thank you, Farmersville, I, Germantownship. I, I looked at that quickly, and again, they said, um, if you're a net producer, it may be beneficial for you to remain with utility, which is consistent with what you guys heard, right? Uh, so I, I don't know. I don't know. What this, this guy said to Patty today about opting in and opting out doesn't make any sense.
It doesn't make sense because I, I'm, you know, they can opt out of Archer and opt back with them, no, no charge, but I can't imagine any, yes.
That's true too, but either, either they recognize net metering, give you the same benefit as a solar producer with renewable, clean energy, or they don't. And looking at your bill to say, what time of year am I making money or not making money? I mean, I've spent money. That's why we have solar. So that doesn't make sense to me. Um, so, and I know, you may not know this off the top of your head, but what are the broker fees to, is it Trebell or Treble? Whatever, those guys. Okay. What are broker fees? We're paying it's a five-year contract. My goodness. That's very disturbing. Archer's a year, I get that, but a five-year deal. Um, it's very discouraging. If we're trying to encourage people in this township and everywhere, look to renewable energy, clean energy, and get us away from some of the problems that we all know exist, this is a disincentive. So my real question is, you know, this Mr. Bell Castro was here and, and gave a big presentation in February of, uh, twenty-three, and the approval came the next month in March. You guys went with Trebell then. And, uh, at that time, it was acknowledged by you guys in the minutes that it would not apply and not help people with solar. So my question really is, it's, it's preliminary to all this. Why would you do that? Uh, when there's people that, first of all, we ought to be encouraging solar. Uh, secondly, there's a bunch of people with it. So why would you even consider somebody that said that solar would not benefit? In fact, would opt out of the program? Why would we do that? Um, there are other vendors out there that provide that, and it doesn't matter, uh, what time of year it is, or, or, uh, who you have a contract with or anything else. But this is, there's a broker, and this broker's not local. This broker's not in Ohio. Um, and I don't know anymore about them, and I don't have anything bad to say about them because I don't know. But how are we, how are they gonna be accountable? They got us for five years now. And we're gonna have to opt out. We're not gonna get any benefit of aggregation, which we helped sell in this township when it was on the ballot, and that's wrong. So I, I'm very disappointed that you would even consider something that blocked out solar users. It's sending the wrong message to the county and the community, that we're just not interested in clean energy. So that's all I wanted to add to what Patty said. I appreciate the work you guys do. We can fix this. We got to. This is really, really disturbing.
And I think, I think we went with Trey Bell because of their experience. They have, I guess, a hundred and thirty different townships and municipalities that they.
Not in Ohio.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, they're, they're not the leader in Ohio, even close.
I don't know about that.
They're not. But, uh, and I don't care who else it is. I'm not here to advocate for anybody different that's somebody other than them that allows the benefits of solar panels and net meter.
So we had multi, we had another company come in and pitched too. Trey Bell was here probably six or seven years ago as well. So we, there's been a conversation ongoing.
And they're, they came to the township associations.
Correct.
Meeting, and they were one of the sponsors and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, so.
Lobbyed hard.
Well, I mean, no, that, that wasn't just Germantownship, Jackson Township, Perry Township, uh, several in, in Preble County. They're all went with Trey Bell at the same time. Um, and I think that's what I'm buying. What helps is, at the end of the day, that's one of the reasons we're getting a better rate for the ninety-eight percent of the residents that don't have solar. So I know, I understand what you're saying, but I think at the end of the
Understand what you're saying.
Right. I mean, we, we gotta make the decision.
Yeah, I, I, and but if you compare rates, and if we're screwed for five years, we are. If you compare rates, there are better deals out there. Um, but that's all I have to add, and I appreciate you taking that time to listen.
And they're gonna, a, a year from, well, within a year from now, they're gonna go out and get us a rate for the following year, so.
Hopefully what that allows solar.
It's, yeah, me.
Thank you.
James Rollin, one zero zero two one, Carlisle Pike. While they're on this issue, I'm part of that two percent. I have Duke. I keep being told I'm gonna get a letter that I'm gonna be able to opt out. I keep calling them, and I can't, can't opt out. How do I opt out?
You have Duke Energy?
Yes.
You have Duke, you're on that.
No, that's, that's other rules. I'm actually out.
No, if, if it isn't AES based, oh, is anybody?
So we're okay? Duke is not a co-op, no. Because we were told the entire township and, and all the people on Carlisle Pike that's on this, on the, um, if, if you're not on AES. If you're not on AES, so when, if we're on Duke, we're okay, and we're not gonna have to opt out.
You're already opted out.
You're already, okay, well, that's good. I, that's, I just want to make sure.
Did you get a letter?
No, I did not, because I was told, I was told we would get a letter, and we never received it. Only AES customers. Okay, all right. Well, that, that's what was concerning because we told we would get a letter, and I haven't seen a letter, and I didn't want to be stuck.
You're, you're technically opted out unless you're an AES customer.
I'll have another question later. Thank you.
You can throw it at us now, Joe.
No, there may be somebody more important that there's got something else I wanna say about that. Anybody else? He said he's got a question later. Can I have a question later? I'm just trying to finish up the electric thing all in one.
Well, they said anything they say, apparently.
We, we let, we let questions at any time. We're not letting some of the other people around here.
Uh, my name is Mark Burgett.
Sorry, Mark what?
Mark Burgett.
Oh, sure.
Um, I live along Farmington Road, eight eight thirty, where the SRN Materials is getting ready to move in. Emailed a couple of you. You returned my email. Thank you very much. Um, I got you on my list. There's some Montgomery County ordinances on the gravel pits. I don't know all of them, and things that might have changed even. Um, but do you know, do they have to get permits to work on Sunday?
They, they do not. So basically, we looked into this, and it came up yesterday. Those, the, the only conditions on that apply are the ones that the BZA, uh, approved when that conditional use was approved back in two thousand and seven.
That's my other thing. How can they be grandfathered if this is gonna be a new location?
That was, that was enough. That was location.
They're good there, but will it be the same when they go across the street in my backyard?
That's the concern, yeah, certainly. So anyway, so the only conditions on.
Uh, you can be here tomorrow night? I will. No, most of this will be tomorrow night, but I might not get to speak tomorrow. I don't.
You, you will. Everybody will get to speak. So, so basically, the BZA, let me finish and know.
Yeah, yeah.
The BZA, the only stipulation, they made a few stipulations. One was that it was only during daylight hours, but it did not stipulate which day. So they can, you know, they can.
I've seen in the Montgomery County laws and rules that I was reading, where it did say Sunday, only if they had permission. That's where I found. I'll have more of that tomorrow.
Yeah, I have to pick tomorrow. Yeah, because we, we talked to our legal, legal representative, and she says, basically, the only thing that applies as far as the township goes, the, the conditions that were put there by the BZA. And then again, the BZA, unfortunately, for better or for worse, um, only said during daylight hours.
No worries.
Yeah, that's what, when they, when that portion was, portion across the street was okay. So that would apply to, you know, pretty much anything.
Probably the next step too.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily apply if, uh, BZA, whatever the BZA does tomorrow. They can put any conditions on it if they want, so.
Uh, they would, you know, so, no worries. Um, once we talk about this tomorrow, when do you actually vote on that? Do you know yet?
They can vote the same day. Yeah, usually, usually they tend to vote the same day. So I would, would recommend getting here early. Get a seat.
It is, it is, I've talked to the president of BZA about waiting for our night, and we expect a large crowd and a lot of speakers. Um, I think he's, he's gonna let it go till ten PM at the latest, and if we cannot get through everything, unable to vote, we will have to continue until eleven.
Might not take that long. Hopefully not, right?
Fingers crossed.
You know, it's probably a good thing for our city, maybe. Be a lot of money, right? So you're money for us. Oh, does anybody have anything? The BZA will also know the steps that they're going.
Yeah, that should be in the, yeah.
And it's a form that I can get from them.
Um, I can show you the map layer, if you, if you wanna stick around, or with their permission. I don't know if you guys need me for a little bit.
No, you can.
You, I can. So, did you see the Big Macs?
Yeah, just James Rollin again. Um, they are, they've drilled, and it's a hundred feet deep. The gravel is what they claim. It's how deep they're claiming. That's what they're, that's what they're, well, that's what they're claiming. Um, also, um, I'd like to follow that there's violation of they're operating at nighttime. Um, running the dragline at nighttime, and they're also running the concrete plot plant at nighttime. Um, they have lights on, they're running it like that. As a matter of fact, they were still running it when I came here for the meeting tonight, and there've been many nights at ten or eleven o'clock at night, they'll have the lights on, and they're running the, uh, they're, they're running the dragline and the concrete, and the concrete works across.
Well, I'm sure they can run the concrete. That's not the mining.
Okay, well, they're mine, they're running the dragline at ten or eleven o'clock, and that would be the mining part. Yes, they're, they're, they're.
Again, I, you know, you're coming to the meeting tomorrow?
Yes, I am.
Okay, yeah, bring, bring all that up.
I'm gonna do that. I also had a question, though, concerning our solar panel thing that we guys had put in place before. Do we know what has become of that or where that's at?
The moratorium's still in place, and I believe I'll let you talk on it.
Yeah, uh, I was gonna get to this later. The, basically.
I was waiting.
You're good. The zoning commission will vote on the new regu, they got the new regulations all written up. They're gonna vote on that, the twenty-sixth of, of March this month. Then by law, the, the township trustees have to vote on also. So, um, so I would encourage, you know, you can go to that meeting on the twenty-sixth or go to the next one, would it?
Well, the reason I bring this up is because, um, we, we put this that in place to save our farmland. And tomorrow night, we're gonna be coming again about our farmland on the conditional use thing that's worse for our, for our properties than solar is, because the solar could be poured out of the ground, and you could reclaim it and farm it. But if you've got a gravel pit, there's no reclaiming it and never farming it again. And so my, my request, and the reason I came here tonight was to ask that if we could put something in place for this mining and excavating or agricultural stuff similar to the solar farm stuff.
You can, you can change the zoning resolution, but, uh, it's, it's a long process.
Well, no, I, what, what I mean is, right now, it's zoned agricultural. And, um, the, the solar stuff, you're just gonna say can't be done on agriculture unless you're doing it as your personal use.
Right.
I don't understand why you couldn't do exactly the same thing with the mining and excavating, that you could say you can only do it, and for your own personal use, you can't sell any of this stuff off. Ending, uh, gravel pit is considered under agriculture.
Again, gravel pit is, is allowed as a conditional use under agricultural.
But it's a conditional. It had, but I mean, it has to be approved, approved for. Conditionally used.
Conditionally used, it has to go.
Okay, so just, so it's not like, it's not like the so, see, that's why I'm confused. I, I understand how you go, solar panels. To be industrial. Well, but, but, so, but the mining and stuff, the mining stuff is actually, it does, uh, uh, okay, okay, that's fine. That's, for their law, it's, that's, that makes.
Can be done in agriculture.
With a conditional.
It can be done in an agricultural district as a condition.
As a condition.
So that, that means it has to go before, like any conditional use has to go before the BZA, and that's where you get that level of.
So we, so you just jumpstarted the, the solar thing before it got into that conditional use thing there is, is, that makes, that makes, thank you. That cleared it up for me. Thank you.
Make sure you come tomorrow.
I will be here. I will be here tomorrow. I got a lot more.
Yeah, no, you, you're good.
Anybody else?
Just wondering if we can put in the gravel pit, but make it a jet.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'm not putting that in the mix.
Then we would get some money out of it. I, I'm just concerned of, of the, they have, they have a statement, and the thing it says is harmonious use, and.
Yeah, there's, there's certain things that have to be, that will be voted on as far as the conditional use, and all those have to, that one, one is.
There's, there's almost four, there's almost three hundred and fifty acres of land that's exactly the same along that, that or, that forder right there that I live on. I have thirty-seven acres, lander size acres, we all, and it looks all exactly the same as that piece of property that they're looking at right now. So if tomorrow night they make a vote, and they say that it's okay to do it there, they're basically saying it's okay to do it all these other places, because they're all, they're all in the harmonious use with the rest of the stuff. But it's a, it's a big deal tomorrow night. The vote is.
It's a very big deal.
It's a very big deal, because it's not, it doesn't just relate to this.
It's just that, that.
Yes, yeah, that's what I'm going to. I, and that's, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get into, no, no, you're just gonna.
Get your questions together so when you come up.
Yeah, no, I, I've, I've got, I've looked at your articles, and I've looked at their, their, the permit that they gave you that's, that has stuff on it that's not true, and I've got a whole bunch, I've got a whole list of stuff for, for the town. I know that's not for this meeting, and I didn't.
No, you're, that's fine, it's fine.
Yeah, but again, the BZA is a totally independent.
Yes, no, I, I understand. I just wanted, my point was, I just wanted to see the difference between the solar farm, like how solar farms and that were different. But in, in your explanations, that makes perfect sense.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we'll move on to the fiscal officers' report.
Hello. Okay. Good evening, everyone. So to begin, we have the minutes from the February twelfth meeting. Are there any corrections, additions? If not, could I have a motion to approve them?
I can make a motion to approve the minutes from the two twelve twenty-four regular meeting.
Thank you. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. I've also, um, sent you ahead of time the February financial reports. You have the February, the end of the month fund status report. You have the year-to-date cash summary by fund. You have the month of February cash summary by fund, the February receipts, and the February payments. And I just want to point out one payment, that is warrant number five zero seven five four. The City of Germantown, forty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty cents. That is the payment you approved at the February meeting using holdback funds from the EMS Fire two thousand and ten levy fund, which was number twenty-one ninety-three. And we paid those, that amount was to pay for items not covered by grants that the fire department wanted to purchase. Otherwise, um, pretty much everything else is routine. Are there any questions about the financials? If not, could I have a motion to approve the financial reports and authorize the payment of our February bills?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the February financial reports and authorize the payment of February bills warrants five oh seven five oh through five oh seven five five and vouchers thirty-eight through one eighty-three for payroll, direct deposit, tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
Second. Any discussion of the motion? All in hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Right. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on, um, the township received correspondence from Montgomery County Commissioner Carolyn Rice. Ms. Rice noted that the state of Ohio modified ORC one twenty-eight back in two thousand and twenty-three using House Bill thirty-three. And among the changes is a new requirement that all county nine-one-one program review committees must complete and submit an updated countywide nine-eleven system final plan to the state. And as part of finalizing the county plan for Montgomery County, each municipality and township must pass a resolution approving the plan. I sent you the, um, Montgomery County nine-eleven final plan, and, um, to approve that, let's use a resolution, and we'll make that number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four.
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four, a resolution to approve the Montgomery County, uh, countywide nine-one-one system final plan.
Second. Any discussion of the resolution? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four is adopted. Back on February twentieth, Dr. Cross and I attended a meeting with representatives from the City of Germantown to discuss the potential fire EMS levy for the November ballot. Just as a reminder, as you know, the township currently has two joint fire EMS levies with the city. The older two-mil levy was first passed in two thousand and two, then renewed in two thousand The older two-mil levy was first passed in two thousand and two, then renewed in two thousand and six as a continuous levy. It now has an effective rate of point nine six six mil. The newer two-mil levy was passed in two thousand and ten as a continuous levy and now has an effective rate of one point two seven two mils. After discussing, discussing options at the February twentieth meeting, the group which included the fire chief, uh, the fire lieutenant, uh, councilman Coon and Deputy Fiscal Officer Stiber, I don't think that she wasn't there. Uh, they have all recommended that the trustees start the process to, um, put a new ballot, a new levy on the ballot in November. And we'll start that by requesting the county auditor to certi-, certify the amount that would be generated. And they would like us to have the county auditor certify. Option one would be to keep the two thousand and two levy as well as the two thousand and ten levy and place a new continuous four-mil levy on the ballot. So I've given you the resolution to use for that purpose. We'll make that twenty twenty-four twenty-five.
Thanks, Gary.
Would somebody like to introduce that resolution? Twenty-five.
I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five. Resolution requesting that the Montgomery County Auditor's Office certify to Germantownship the total current tax valuation of Germantownship Incorporated and unincorporated areas and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by a four-point-o mil levy for continuous period of time of additional tax beginning tax year twenty twenty-four with first half collection in twenty twenty-five provide funding for fire and emergency medical service as authorized in ORC section five seven oh five point one nine I to be voted on the November fifth, twenty twenty-four general election ballot.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion of the resolution?
I have discussion, but we can wait till after we do the second one.
All right.
Because this is just to put it on, or just to start the process here.
Um, any, anyone else want to have any discussion on this resolution? Okay, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
And Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-four twenty-five is adopted. The second option they would like to consider is to keep the two thousand and ten levy and replace the two thousand and two levy with a new continuous five-mil levy. So if someone could introduce resolution twenty-six for that purpose.
I'd introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six. A resolution requesting that the Montgomery County Auditor's Office certify to Germantownship the total current tax valuation of Germantownship Incorporated and unincorporated areas and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by replacing a two-mil fire levy approved in twenty, two thousand and two and renewed in two thousand and six for a continuous period of time with a new five-point-oh mil levy for a continuous period of time of replacement tax beginning tax year twenty twenty-four with first half collection in twenty twenty-five to provide funding for fire and emergency medical services as authorized in ORC section five seven oh five point one nine I to be voted on the November fifth, general, twenty twenty-four general election ballot.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion of the resolution?
I'm just gonna throw it out there, because I'm the one. The city is taking sixty thousand dollars out of the fire EMS levy funds every year.
Take fifty or sixty?
Sixty.
Six zero.
Six zero. Thirty from fire, thirty from EMS. After ten years, that's six hundred thousand dollars. So they're, they're gonna ask for a five-mil levy when we're getting some pushback for a point five mil cemetery levy, which is the cemetery's only, uh, levy funding. Um, it's just that, that, that's gonna be a super hard sell and I, I have a problem with it when they're taking so much money out of the, uh, the, uh, the funds as it is. Um, so I've, I've said my piece and that's where I'll leave it.
Well, I think it's gonna be a hard sell too.
It's, yeah, well, we talked about that and they, once we, they determine which one, a four or a five-mil levy, they're gonna have to start selling that right away. It's gonna be very difficult. People are, has a huge, huge levy, so.
Yeah, they, they better not let go of what they got. At least a one of what they got.
Yeah, we put a resolution in to just do away with levies altogether and keep.
They won't get voted in that they're doing away with.
Yeah.
But if it doesn't pass, whichever one is chosen and you approve it eventually to be put on the ballot, if it doesn't pass, nothing will change from what it is now.
Correct.
Our levies will still be in.
Just for an outsider's view here, I, I don't understand. All my property that I own in Germantownship valuations went up between forty and fifty-five percent this last tax. That means there's already extra money coming in. At least, at least for all the properties that I'm paying, if we just keep it the way it is. Now, now you wanna say you wanna double it? And so it's like, I'm, I'm kind of, this is not bothering to me.
It's for a certain amount, so those two levies are not gonna, their income's not gonna increase from those, they're gonna be same amounts.
The county gets more. We, you don't, our local levies don't get more money.
Did you understand what they said? They started at two and now it's at one.
That's a town, that's a county, the county's asking for that money?
No, the township is, but the township, we don't get extra money. So if a levy's.
Well, that mill, that millage is based upon the value of my property, right?
Time passes and never changes.
Two thousand and two.
That's why the millage is, it was starting.
No, I know that, I know that, but I'm saying mine, mine has went up now.
But this, it's not. We should go back to two thousand and two.
It's not gonna. You're a new one.
You're gonna put a new one in.
At the new value.
That's gonna be the new value. So not only am I gonna get hit by more millage, but I'm also gonna get hit by that other doubling my taxes because of the property of my values, of my properties. It supposedly doubles.
Yeah.
What, what?
I, I'm just, I'm just saying, double, I'm gonna get double hit.
My understanding, and then you could correct me if I'm wrong, but in two thousand and two with a two-mil levy, but now it's only producing point nine nine.
Roll in saying with the new levy.
Yes, that's correct.
Correct. And what the auditor will tell us, and then it'll be brought back first to the committee and then eventually to the trustees, is how much money would that generate? And does that amount make sense based on projections for the fire EMS?
Well, they're asking for two big a bite.
I, I'm just, I'm just, my problem is, and not everybody, like in two thousand and eight, when everybody's property values went down, mine didn't go down. Mine went up. And then people's went down. And then when they went back up again, mine went back up with everybody else's and I tried to fight it and they wouldn't do it. And they went, evaluated and they went up again. And then they evaluated them again and they went up again. But my taxes just keep going up and up and up every, every single time, whether we pass anything or not. And that's why you.
But I'm just.
It's painful when we start talking about.
I understand that this, the, the levy, they're asking for more money because their two, their two-mil levy is only generating point nine six cents now. I know, I'm just saying that's, they're asking for two big a bite here.
Less, because I'm not.
Well, just the ma-, just the math on top of my head, because knowing the cemetery's a point five and they're asking for five, that's ten times more. So we're getting, asking for eighteen dollars per hundred thousand dollars of value, which means they're gonna be asking for a hundred and eighty dollars per, which is outrageous to me.
And your. Next week is at the old rates.
The, so, but my, yeah, so it would be, it would be even hi- higher. Most likely, but I, I mean, again, the city's taken sixty thousand dollars for administrative fees out every year. Where's that money going? That money could have gone towards the fire department, towards the EMS, not to pay the administrator salaries in the city building.
I'll officially stand up this time. Mark Keener, seventy-eight, sixty-five, Jamaica. Um, was there any discussion of just replacing the two-mil levy, one of the two-mil levies with a two-mil levy, just do a replacement levy to this ridiculous four percent, five percent, that's, it's not gonna pass. I mean, you, you might as well hang it up now. You're gonna have a lot better chance of passing few percent, get up to the current value. We're still gonna pay.
They're still gonna.
But, I mean, this, this is not gonna fly, plain and simple. The, the people are gonna revolt. Um, and then to Mr. Stubbs' point about the sixty thousand a year they're taking, when they started taking that, the, the justification was this is to pay for the time other city employees are spending tending to the fire department, doing maintenance at the firehouse. That was the, the line they gave us for the fire or the senior center for the pool. Then, a year or two later, they started adding another line item for payroll for the people doing stuff. They kept this quote-unquote administrative fee that was supposed to pay for. So I'm betting if you go back and you look at your detailed budget for the fire EMS, you're gonna see a line item on there for, that's additional payroll. So that, that is for not only the fire department, but for people from other departments within Germantown quote-unquote spending time working on the fire stuff. So, and they've kept the additional sixty thousand that they're taking. So, I mean, the city is lying to us over and over about what they're doing with the money, why their justification is for the money. So, you know, this, this has gotta stop. I mean, it's just plain and simple, gotta stop. So I think you guys ought to also do a resolution to see what would be raised for just replacing one of the two-mil levies and use that also to come up with a number. And if, if that's not discussed with the city, that we do a two-mil levy replacement, what can you do with that? Then, you know, that, that's just irresponsible on our part if we're not looking at other alternatives.
This, this is absolutely outrageous.
I think that just replacing the two-mil wouldn't, wouldn't give you enough money.
Well, what's enough money then? But I mean, that. What they're doing.
If not passing, won't give them enough.
Yeah, I mean, exactly, exactly. And I mean, look at what they did with the firehouse when that was built. I mean, that had an original budget and I'm just trying to remember numbers in my head of, I, I think it was under three million. And every time we turned around, and I mean, you were going to meetings and, and saying how they were approving resolutions to due to cost overruns, they were adding another fifty thousand here or two hundred thousand there. And I think the thing ended up over budget, over the original budget of close to a million dollars. So why, why are we believing anything that they say with money anyway? I mean, Judy spends money down there like she's a drunken sailor and apologies to drunken sailors everywhere. But I mean, this, this is crazy. I, I would just encourage additional discussions with the city. Alternatives to ridiculous amounts of taxation, so. You can tell, if, if this goes to the ballot, I'll be the one pleading the charge to, to turn this down and to Mr. Potter's point. Well, I, I'll get your name and number. Uh, and, but to Mr. Potter's point, you know, they're, they're not gonna have anything if they try to push through a, a four or five-mil levy. I mean, that's just. I've said my piece. Since oh two, my, the values on all my properties since oh two have at least doubled. So if you're talking about two, two thousand and two valuations at today's valuation, you're gonna get double the money from me on the same, on the same levy.
Yeah.
Same two-mil levy, you're gonna get double the money. I don't know how it compares with everybody else's. But I know that on my property, it would be double the money that you're getting.
And that, that, that's something that could possibly pass, a replacement.
Yeah, a two-mil replacement of what we're already paying is, is already, is already a pocket burner, but but I understand, we need money to run it and I'm willing to pay my part, but.
But, yeah, because you're expanding it from the two thousand and two to now, so.
And I'll add in with the cemetery, the reason we asked for replacement this time, um, because inflation, uh, the cost of fuel, everything's gone up. So we're maintaining our, our cemetery levy off of ten plus year old. And, and we just can't keep up with the cost of everything else. I get that, that's, but that's a replacement at the same amount there. This is, I can't, this is crazy. This is crazy.
I mean, at some point too, I'm just trying to think of when things were passed. Um, you know, we're gonna have to consider it the township for the unincorporated part of the township, probably a new police levy.
Yeah.
And I mean, I know our costs are going up with police and, but that, that hasn't been. We did a replacement, I think, right when I got here, so two fifteen, twenty fifteen or sixteen. But, you know, their, their costs have gone up a lot since then.
Yep.
And the, well, and what, what kind of problems we've had even trying to get a small road. There, there's no way.
You wouldn't have to fix Butter Street all the time for, from, from all that concrete work that's going up and down it. It'd be a lot easier.
So get back to my earlier question about, hey, let's put those gravel pits in and make it a jet.
Getting Carlisle. Just kidding, just kidding.
Any more discussion of the resolution?
Don't think so.
And then I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Now, I, before I go on to a new topic?
Yep.
Do you want?
Absolutely. Let me go ahead and do it.
And, and we'll make that twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, twenty-seven.
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, a resolution to, uh, requesting that the Montgomery County Auditor's Office certify the Germantownship, the total current tax valuation of Germantownship Incorporated and Incorporated areas and the dollar in time of, of the replacement of the two-mil which year, twenty-ten?
Which one, twenty-ten or twenty-two?
Oh, two, oh, two, twenty-oh-two. For the, and the rest of it. I got lost on where I was at, so, uh, for a continuous, well, it's a continuous period of time beginning in two thousand and twenty-four for the first half collection, twenty-five, to provide funding for the fire emergency medical services as authorized in ORC section five seven zero five point one nine to be voted on at the November fifth general election.
That covered all. Essentially, it's number twenty-six. Simply.
But it's.
With a two-mil instead of a five-mil.
Correct.
That's really what you've done. You've done.
Yeah.
The same resolution, changing five mils to two mils.
As a, as a, uh, yeah, replacement at the same.
Right.
Same millage.
Replacing twenty-oh-two with, with the new two-mil.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion of resolution twenty twenty-four, twenty-seven?
I would just say there's probably one option of the three that has a snowball's chance of passing.
Any more discussion? Now I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
And Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four, twenty-seven is adopted and I'm not sure that I said that for twenty-six, it was also adopted. Okay, new subject. That actually, uh, maybe, maybe it's not as new as we, because we have talked about this before. So, as you know, the Ohio Senate is now going to include a list of capital projects when they consider House Bill two later this spring. Now, House, the House at the legislature, the House passed HB two earlier this year and they used three hundred and fifty million dollars of, of local projects in that vote they had. That was half of the seven hundred million that the legislature approved back in two thousand and twenty-three under the one-time strategic community investment fund. So the House projects included, as we know, the sixty thousand dollars for the Twin Creek erosion project as well as two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the renovation of the Germantown Covered Bridge. But the Senate now can put in their projects. There's a deadline of April eighth. And you may want to consider adding other projects and asking Senator Antoni's office to include that particular project. But we are running against the deadline of April eighth. I did look at all of the projects that the House approved and none of them involved roadwork or any kind of equipment purchase such as dump trucks or police cars. So the one we would most likely want to do, I, I think would not be accepted similar to the cemeteries wasn't accepted by the House.
Well, I have actually already submitted the cemeteries to Nerraj. Just the same plant we sent it in, so if they rejected, so just for those of you who are here, we submitted a plan for the cemetery to redo the driveways. It's something that we're never gonna be able to afford at the cemetery. Uh, so I'm, I think off the top of my head, we were somewhere near just under a half a million dollar project. We came up with, uh, to fix and repair all the driveways throughout the cemetery. That was submitted to the House. It was not, they didn't take that project, so, uh, when this came up, I, I submitted the exact same project and, uh, to Nerraj, hoping that we can get that in because it, it's important to our. When this came up, I submitted the exact same project and to Naraaj, hoping that we can get that in because it's important to our entire community. And fixing it would benefit, benefit our entire community, make it safer and easier to maintain. Overall, so we'll see. It's been submitted. Fingers crossed, I guess, on that one.
We have another. Resolution issue at Little Quinn. I took Ron wine down there, took a look at it. It would be approximately the same price, just guessing at it, of moving that over. That, and what I was telling you about down there closer to Harshburgers. Of moving that. As a project, we're looking for a project.
Is that township property?
Yes, along our route.
That borders our roadway again?
Yes. It's, it's probably maybe even worse than what this was. Maybe you get looking at it. I also want to bring that up for maybe, at least for you guys to go out and take a look at it between now and the next meeting.
Well, the deadline is actually the day of our next meeting.
We can go ahead and do the, for the project. I don't have no problem with that. Even if we didn't do the project, I was wanting you guys to still maybe meet with Jeremy or go out there and take a look at, at what I'm talking about there on Little Quinn. Because there is, that's an issue there. Right on the road.
And it's affecting our roadway?
Absolutely.
Bed Cross?
Bed Cross, seven four four South Stivers. Why wouldn't we have done that project first then?
We're doing both of them. I mean, I don't understand the question.
Well, if we did that other big project. So if the other one's worse.
As bad or worse. That's got nothing to do with the city. Would not have went fifty fifty with us on that.
This would be just ours?
That's a hundred percent in the township. A hundred percent. And that's nothing to do with the city. No, we're near the city. Yes.
Abigail Dennis, one three zero nine one Oxford. You just said, though, this could have been worse. Why didn't we look at this first? Because how much has this been approximately cost?
It costs close to the same amount. Ron thought.
We should spend this large chunk after we just gave that last large chunk?
We aren't spending the last large chunk. If we get the grant, we don't.
It's still an if.
It's still an if. We don't get the grant, then we won't be spending nothing out here.
Why wasn't this proposed when that was proposed then, to know that this was a problem also?
Didn't even know how this was going to work out. So wasn't going to do two things till we seen how the first one worked out.
Could it be worse than the other?
I don't know what you want me to tell you. I'm just telling you, we didn't want to see how this was going to go. The city was not going to help us with the Little Quinn project problem.
I'm taking the city out of this. I'm just thinking of us, maybe what we spend in the future amount. I'm not talking about the city.
Well, we did the project with where we had helped with the city to do the project.
Yes, but we still pay thirty thousand of our. Saying there work there's gonna be additional on top of thirty, then you're gonna be adding something.
Either if you do this one first or that one first, it's still gonna be an additional one. Which one doesn't matter which one you do first.
Why do we have to do? I think it could be discussed differently. Okay.
There's two problems.
Jeremy, have you been out there?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's, it's bad. It, it could use someone. We've been trying to work under that nationwide permit thirteen to add. Some. Concrete along there, but it's still, it's, it's close.
But who actually owns the property? Because I think the last project, didn't we end up on some people's property that we shouldn't have? When they were. Doing the last project, so if we don't, if we don't own it.
Understand. That all had to be found out. But yes, we ended up downstream, and we ended up not on what we was doing up there. At the main erosion. It was what the maintenance they was doing downstream.
Gotcha. I, I just, when I, when the guy was here, I asked him. When do the creek projects, or when, when do you get it fixed and it's all taken care of? And he said, you don't. Well, I, I believe my response to him was the funding ends. So whether there's problems.
That's why, that's why I was asking for our maintenance of money each year so that it doesn't end. So, if, if, as long as there's a creek, there always will be a problem.
You know who controls that waterway over there? Like, is it the Conservancy District or is it the townships?
Townships.
Is it? Are you sure we own that, that it's under our control?
It's far off the road.
Oh, my, my point is, is the section that we just fixed in conjunction with the city, the city actually owned the waterway. Issues there. Because I talked to somebody.
We own, where the problem is, is in the townships right away. Wouldn't you think?
The road right?
That could be.
Now, where it would need to be moved to would be. On, on private property. Which would be, I'm pretty certain it's Wally's divers.
At the, at the toe of the problem. Without doing any survey. I kind of doubt it's the right way. But it is directly having an effect.
On the. The creek, the creek there is probably twenty feet below the road. Below the road there, unlike it is down here. But it's coming in underneath. But it's, it's, it's got a patch. They put a lot of concrete in there, but it's just.
Let's just rephrase that. We haven't.
We haven't. There's been a lot of concrete put in there. And then right on down toward town. Again, close to the Harshburger property. Four or five feet from the edge of the road to the edge of the creek. It's, needs maintenance. Fix it now, fix it later.
Fix it now and later. Because I got creek on my property.
It never stops.
Never stops.
It never stops moving.
It undercuts it or it cuts behind it?
Yep. It never stops moving.
Possible to stop it.
Has to be made.
Band-aided.
So are you proposing that we ask Naraaj for sixty thousand for this project or?
Yes, that, I'm, I thought, yes.
Well, I think we need to get an actual, well, the ones we submitted before had an actual.
If we can't submit it without an estimate.
I can do that. I'll get a hold of online.
Do you think you want to?
Unless we, we have any other projects. I was just throwing a project out. We have any more projects? That we can ask for? I'm hoping there, I'm just, this is just one project.
Sound like they're real hip on doing road projects.
They're not doing. That's, this is the only non-road project that I've seen.
I mean, I didn't see anything that said they wouldn't.
Well, I think they're.
But the House didn't put any in and eliminated the one that we thought was the most needed erosion control.
Well, we've already passed, we've already got one of those through.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'll write it up as a road repair.
No, no, no. Absolutely. And that's what, and we got that, already got one passed from the one side. So.
I'm just open for other projects.
We need another project.
Get a, get a, get a price with the, with the proposal and then. Try.
Yeah.
So can we give Lou authorization tonight to get the proposal and send it in? So we don't have to do with it. That's how I did my, I didn't ask for.
Have a special meeting.
Well, we can't give him the authority to submit a price.
We can go, he can go get. Proposal without any authorization.
Go ahead and submit it.
For us to submit it, I think you need to have a special meeting with the quote in front of you. It can be just a, go get a quote and let's. Now, I would not be comfortable with that, that solution.
It would be worth a special meeting.
If we're going to re-try, but in a, a request, we should, absolutely, it's worth a five-minute special meeting. I just want you to be aware of the deadline so that we work within that deadline.
Absolutely.
So I went to the, to, to get back along to that, I went to the Germantown Council meeting, Rodney Creach was there. And basically, he kind of painted a dim picture of, hey, get this going. Even the House. Because there's so much infighting as far as the state between the. Even the House of Representatives, because a lot of, I guess a lot of representatives didn't even know that they could apply for some of the projects. So it was more political. Trying to get quotes. But anyway, that's.
So if they don't pass it, they get reshuffled and do it again?
They don't have to do it at all.
You just be done.
Yeah. One way or another, they're gonna spend the seven hundred million. That's the question of what projects are in it. Because that seven hundred million was allocated in last year's annual budget.
Nope.
Right. I will. Reach out to Ron.
And we'll set up the special meeting when necessary.
When, when we have something.
A vote on.
A vote on, yes. And if there's any other projects you want to consider, as Mr. Potter has said. You know, we've got three weeks, four weeks. Before the deadline, so we can put in more than one. We can put in any number. Because when you look at who got the awards in Montgomery County, they weren't one per jurisdiction necessarily.
Bed Cross, what about the wall?
Yeah, we can do that. We actually talked tonight about. Having a local concrete company come out and give us an estimate on what it would cost to, to repair it. Yeah, that's definitely another, another one we could submit, but it would be, it would be another one from the, well, I guess it can be from us. Or the cemetery, but. Yeah, I mean, if they would, when we were prioritizing, so when we discussed it at the cemetery. The two things we talked about was either the wall or the driveways, and we submitted the one we thought was the biggest need. A most immediate need for, to benefit the cemetery, and that's why we went with the roadway. The wall definitely needs attention, but. Again.
And the most expensive.
Well, yeah, the roadway is definitely gonna be more expensive too. So that's why we submitted the, we were hoping for, you know.
Again, it might be the little projects get more because then more people benefit more.
Yeah, it's possible. I mean, we can get. We can get a proposal in for that as well.
Definitely. That's all. That's a good idea.
I mean, the largest project in Montgomery County approved by the House was two million dollars. For Miami Chapel Inspiring Zone Youth Workforce Development Center, Boys and Girls Club. A million, two fifty for the Kettering Business Park, Chuster Center, a million. County. Country. Art, countryside park revitalization, a million. Dayton Aviation Heritage Site, the Wright Brothers Factory, a million. Centerville, Uptown Centerville, Town Activity and Development Improvements, a million.
But not Little Township getting a million.
I don't think we'll get a million, but I know, I'm just saying, but we could. I mean. Sixty was certainly one of the small ones.
Yes, absolutely.
In the county. Man. There's only one smaller than us, and that was the Miami Historical Society for forty thousand.
So if you can get a. Go with the wall.
Yeah.
Theoretically, we could.
We can't do the wall, I don't think. Because we don't own the, the property.
That's true in town city.
I would think, I would think that'd have to be the cemetery.
That's fine. We can submit it to the cemetery.
I don't see how it could be something we could. And another political jurisdiction, I'm not sure how we could do that for them.
I don't know, we don't own the creek bank either.
We own.
I mean, I'm just.
The road. Is what I'm hearing.
Absolutely, it's affecting the road.
Okay. Any more on that issue? If not, I'll move on. I am going to skip the next item because I, we kind of talked about Archer already. And maybe Dr. Cross will talk about it again during his report. So I'll move on to my next one after that. And that is. The Ohio Commission for the United States. See if I can say this word, semi-quinsentennial. Which is the two hundred and fiftieth celebration of the United States. It's gonna happen in twenty twenty six. The Ohio Commission is inviting Ohio Townships to apply to be an official America two fifty O H community. This designation will allow access to resources like digital toolkits. An online community platform and regular check-ins with other A M two fifty O H communities. No charge to receive this recognition. And I did send you the process on how to become an official committee. And if you're, I don't even think we need a motion necessarily. Because down the road, if we decide to do this, you'll adopt a formal resolution. I just really want approval to be able to start the process that'll eventually result in a resolution. Are you interested in this?
Is this something that can tie in with the two, the two hundred and fifty year celebration that the Historical Society and the City of Germantown have already talked about?
Yes, absolutely.
I think that we include the whole community again, again, right? I know we reached out to Valley View, but make it a community-wide event. Yes, I think we should apply for it. There's no charge. And whatever resources they can provide us, it'll just be that much better. And so, yes, I think we should do it.
At this point, I heard crickets from the school as well as from Farmersville and Jackson. I think we're looking at a three entity celebration. And actually, for this designation, we have to have a nonprofit. So we're in great shape with the Historical Society being involved. So if I don't, I'm not hearing anything negative, I'll go ahead and start the process in a month or two, then we'll have you do a resolution. Final reminder, or maybe not final, but we are getting close to the deadline to appropriate the remaining American Rescue Plan Act funds. They have to be appropriated by the end of twenty twenty four. Otherwise, we risk having them, the unappropriated amounts clawed back by the Treasury Department. And after paying for the erosion project, assuming we don't get the grant. We have remaining in that account sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty seven dollars. So. I don't think we want to see that money go back to the federal government.
So what was the quote to paint the building?
Um, I had two painters come out and take a look. I got a quote from one after a couple of weeks. And then after another couple of weeks, after the other guy came out, he texted me and said that he would not be submitting a quote, so I have to find another.
Who did you get a quote from? I got.
Is it the one you gave me the first time? Because he gave me a quote.
Mike?
Yes.
I've got one for you too.
What are you quoting?
On the outside.
Back three side.
This is for later too, but I would like to ask, when we get to the chief's report, which I have tonight. The, the Knox boxes, I was gonna ask that we use that. From the ARPA money, purchases with the ARPA money. But that's, we can talk about that later.
Need any inside painting?
No, I had, before the creek project, I had started to put together proposals for a new Germantownship digital sign, but I kind of. Held off because.
Do we have an idea on cost?
Right around twenty two, twenty three thousand.
Does the ARPA money have to cover the entire project or we add? No. We can add money too, absolutely.
I still have them. I just kind of gave it up after we lost most of the funds in the ARPA, so. Like a dead-end project I hadn't brought up, but.
Well, and if, and if.
If it's over ten, we need two votes.
Yeah.
Or the same with a painting, if it's over ten. Okay, well, we've got a few more months, but we don't want to wait till December. We need to think about this then. Okay, final item. Montgomery County Township Association, next meeting on March twenty eighth. It's at four o'clock at the Montgomery County Business Solution Center on Cincinnati Street. I normally attend those, but I think I'm leaving that afternoon to head to Florida for spring break. So I will not be able to attend. Any of you plan to attend, I would appreciate it. Because I think they're going to talk about hosting. Their future meetings at townships. I know you talked about being interested last month. I, I passed that, all that information that you gave me at our last meeting to the president, Chris Snyder. Who is the Miami Township Administrator. And they're going to discuss that at that meeting, decide whether it's an evening or afternoon, whether dinner is involved. And then if you want to sign up to be a host after hearing that discussion, you could do so at that meeting. So if anyone's able to go, four o'clock on March.
If it was at five o'clock, I can, I can try and make it work at four o'clock.
Okay. You know what we discussed last month, so you can.
Chris heard it all from me, but.
If you can't go, let me know, and then I can, I can try to leave a little early from where I, where I'm at and get up there.
Okay, very good. I'm done. And thank you for me. I'm sorry that it took so long.
Police Department report?
Yeah, I've got, so I would like to mention first that Chief Birch is in Columbus, just north of Columbus, uh, this week, uh, doing his mandatory, uh, chief's training, um, new chief training for Opata. Um, and this training must be attended within the first six months of his appointment to the position, which he is fulfilling. Uh, he's also up there with Jackson Township's new chief, Mark Bruner. So I think it hopefully worked out good that the two of them are there um, and know each other and can work together. It's a smaller, smaller group, it sounds like. Um, so hopefully they can bring back a lot of knowledge and, um, they're not scared away from the job that they just both accepted. Um, so going on in his report, total miles driven, five thousand, five hundred and forty-four, ninety-three dispatches, ninety, eighty-nine case follow-ups. Our cases closed, nine case follow-ups, three arrests, um, eight crashes, forty-seven traffic stops, and eighteen citations. No, um, major equipment issues have arose in the last month. Um, he had down tonight to discuss, and by the way, this is Chief Birch's report. I'm just reading it for him. He, he submitted this in. Um, he wanted the trustees to discuss the possibility of paying for five Knox home boxes at approximately two hundred and ten dollars each. The total would be approximately one thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Um, I think Dr. Cross, um, suggested a six-month loan period rather than a thirty or ninety day as suggested by the EMS. Uh, the loan, th- this would be a six-month max loan, then the box would go to the next person on the waiting list. If anyone, if not, then they would reissue to the original person. If residents plan to need over six months, uh, with that, with other residents on the waiting list, long-term, we would request that the resident buy their own Knox box or, um, through Germantown Fire by the end of the loan period. So that's, and we may be able to buy more if that's a need in the future, but I, I mentioned a little earlier, I think that that's something we could cover with the ARPA money i- if you guys are willing to. Um, I think, uh, having, we could, we could start with five, maybe even three, if you wanted to, just to see how the program goes, but having the, well, Mr. Groen's not here tonight, but to the point he made last month that, uh, elderly people or people that may not be able to get to the door, this could be, uh, definitely a, a time saver for the police department that they'll be able to access the home. Um, and I think it could benefit our residents throughout the township.
Might be something you, might see if you get more, more grant money.
Why don't you think that would cover, the more grant would cover that?
Sorry?
The more grant? That's something that would, that they would cover?
I thought you already submitted something for this year.
I'm not sure if he submitted it for this year, if he's thinking last year.
I wasn't sure of either, when, when he answered mine.
Yeah, I saw that.
But we can wait a month too.
Well, I just didn't know if it, we were kind of over here whispering it. Is that something that?
I'm certain, I'm certain they, it would cover probably the more grant.
Okay.
Or the fire, the, the police grant.
Yeah.
This is actually the more grant.
Okay, police and fire grant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Same. That.
I contacted Wendy French. Okay.
But if, you know, I'm, we don't want to take away another use that you might have.
Well, they're, they're very strict on what you can use it for. So.
Why don't you call, um, up to Otarma?
Wendy French?
Wendy, and ask her.
I'd appreciate it. Yeah.
Tell her what, what we're talking about doing. We can delay this decision next month.
Absolutely.
If you want to use ARPA money, I would want to ha- have an opportunity to, um, do the official ARPA resolution.
Yeah.
Even though it's a small amount.
Right. Um, so thank you, Shawna.
Well, now that was, that was Jeremy's idea. Thank you, Jeremy.
Um, so I, hopefully that'll work out. And then he, the last thing he had on his report was, uh, we're having a new CERT, uh, Community Emergency Response Team class will be meeting twice a week, thanks to the Evenchucks and Lori Rohrbach. The dates from, for the meetings are, uh, March fourteenth, nineteenth, twenty-first, twenty-sixth, and twenty-eighth, from six P M to ten P M, and I believe that's here in the, in the, this meeting.
That's going to be a prompt for the twenty-sixth.
It is.
As well, that's when the zoning commission is voting on the solar.
Oh.
Two, okay.
Change.
Can they do twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth for that?
I will email Kurt tomorrow.
Well, not necessarily, zoning needs to change, maybe the CERT can. Okay.
Don't even know, I don't even go.
Got it. Uh, and that includes, concludes Chief Birch's report.
The department report?
I got a quick report tonight, and I apologize for not getting it out in a timely manner. I got caught up this afternoon, um, with some business at home.
When did it should be made?
I did, and I already sent it, uh, came in a little bit early, put it together, and sent it out, so you all have it in your inbox. Um, basically, the Road Service Department has started getting, uh, cemeteries, um, ready for summer mowing. Uh, we would not picked up much blowdown. Obviously, it collects all sticks and down trees from all winter long, fall and spring. Um, the second item, um, I wanted to report to the board that, uh, I did place the order for the twenty twenty-five International Dump Truck Cabin Chassis that was approved at the last meeting and got with, uh, Mr. He Stan and got a purchase order for that amount. And I also included in my email the quote for the upfitting, which includes the bed and all the salt spreader machinery. And that total price was.
Seventy-one thousand, five twelve ninety-two.
It says.
And no.
Is that what it was?
Yep.
Okay, seventy-one thousand, so it was under the seventy-five thousand threshold. So the cabin chassis was purchased under state bid. But we do not have to go out for cooperative bidding on the audience upfitting. Um, like I said, they did the last truck, and we were extremely satisfied with the working ship and materials that we got on it. So it'd be my recommendation that we award them with that contract. Need to get with Mr. He Stan to see if, how we're going to work a P O for that, since we're still pretty early in the year and funds are getting tight, so, um, we might have to borrow some money out of the general fund, would you say?
Well, we can get together and look at it, and if so, that takes a resolution.
Right, we can do that at the next meeting, possibly, if I do my.
Is this good for a while?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I've already given him a letter of intent and sent him a copy of the cabin chassis, so he knows this is a legitimate order. I mean, getting a straight truck with no equipment on it, so somebody's going to be putting equipment on that truck, so. Um, but yeah, he said he would hold on to that, uh, quote at price, so we could, um, come up with a P O, so. Um, the only other thing I want to report on is the next meeting, which is scheduled for April eighth. I will be unable to attend because my wife is chasing the eclipse, which means I'm chasing the eclipse. So.
Going right over here.
I will probably not be anywhere in the vicinity of, of Germantownship, so. We will be trying to find clean, clear weather.
Gotcha.
Which might be difficult being that it's springtime, but she is stuck on, we're going to find somewhere we can see this thing, so.
Just submit your report.
Okay.
And Luke and.
Okay, just read it.
And that's all.
Zoning Department report?
Um, I want to add to the police department. I sent it to you guys earlier today. The twenty twenty-three annual review is ready. Um, and copies can be picked up if anybody wants them at the police department during regular office hours. Um, zoning, no reports written in February, hallelujah. Um, been a little busy. Zoning Commission is waiting out for a really approval from Montgomery County Planning Commission, uh, for small solar regulations. The planning commission meets this week, March fourteenth, sorry. Um, zoning commission had their regular meeting on Tuesday, March fifth, to discuss other zoning matters that may need to be addressed in the resolution. They also re-approved the small solar regulations, um, because they approved it so long ago that it needs to have that time period where, to get the public hearing in. So the public hearing to discuss regulations for small solar facilities will be on Tuesday, well, I'm obviously going to have to change that, so I will post that.
I'll find out, because that'll affect the next, next meeting too.
Yeah. Um, as long as it is approved by Montgomery County Planning Commission, which we fully expect it to be, hopefully, fingers crossed. Um, and the B C A will meet tomorrow to hear case twenty twenty-four dash O two C U for the possible Smyrna ready mixed mineral extraction expansion. Um, at seven P M.
We'll have somebody here for parking.
Super looking forward to that one. I have asked officers to be on hand for parking or whatever else needed.
Is there anywhere you can hang some of the larger, uh, pot plans?
Can we get them digital and get them on the T V?
Well, there's so many pages.
It's, no, it's not.
Yeah.
No, I spent, I spent a half hour looking through them.
Do you want me to, I could try to put them over on that table where people can look through them?
Yeah, I think.
Or put a tape up where people can look through them?
Good idea. That way, because when people come in, because it's, it's much, just, just at least the, the, the first one that has, you know, where it's going to be.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe like two or three of them out.
Yeah.
Separate, because they're all in a stack mount.
Yeah, I can try to set up one of those tables somewhere on the T V. Okay, good idea. And that, that is all I have for the moment.
I didn't pick up, which meeting are you going to change on the twenty-sixth?
That is the meeting of the zoning commission.
We're going to change.
The public hearing for small solar regulations.
So you'll keep the CERT meeting on the twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Okey-dokey trustee reports, Mr. Pod.
Uh, the park, I was unable to attend the park because I was out of town on business. According to the minutes, the tennis court project, they've got contractors, they've, uh, contacted and waiting on quotes. Um, not much else going on. The intention, uh, the plan, uh, initial planning for the Fourth of July, we'll be selecting a grand marshal at the April meeting. Will Parsons has not heard back from his contact concerning the D F Ibs are still working on that. Erosion project. I think it's working very well, um, has it, was supposed to. I went down and looked at it on Saturday. The creek was up and out of its banks. Uh, the main creek was running straight with the water over the repair, and the brush was calm, allowing the silt, the filter down over the brush as it was supposed to. I went down today, looked at it, all the logs and brush was still in place, and a lot of the gravel island had shifted over and downstream. Um, the pool. Um, had a pool board meeting, uh, no really new developments. Looks like eighty percent of their lifeguards will be returning. Uh, they are concerned about the shorter pool season due to the school starting back so early. It's like three weeks they're going to lose of their income.
Let's turn.
I guess that did, which is proof, calendar was the second or third week of, of August.
So I'll be, miss a couple of weeks, but I'll be a look at them.
Right, I think he still was saying it could be three weeks, but anyways, that's fine. Uh, but that's a lot when there's only so many weeks.
Do they open in the evening on school days until?
They're talking about it. They got a bunch of different options that they're looking at. Um, we already talked, uh, uh, M M I is still working on phases, um, and waiting on warm we- um, on the warm weather. Uh, and see to get started on M M I. And the other thing I had was the email that I sent you about Mr. Mark Cricket. We covered multiple times. But that is all for me.
Multiple years. Yep. Mr. Sebs?
I've just got a few things tonight, much shorter than last month. So cemetery, first and foremost, I'd like to thank the volunteers that have been helping uh, support the, the upcoming levy. I appreciate them getting the information out, getting the signs out and hope, and spreading uh, the information that we need to the community and hopes of passing the point five, uh, replacement levy. Um, they've done a great job. They hand painted, I think, four, four by eight signs. They look great. If you haven't seen them, up and down seven twenty-five, and I think he said the fourth one's going at the, by Kircher Park, maybe? Yeah, yep. Uh, so thank, thank you to everybody involved in that. I greatly appreciate it. Uh, the, the sale of the two Ferris mowers has been complete on gov deals. They both had over two thousand hours on them. Um, and the total price, total between the both of them was approximately two thousand dollars. Uh, eight fifty for one and a little over a thousand, uh, for the other. Um, the new, the new mowers have been delivered, so the old ones, the sale was approved. It should be going out hopefully this week and getting us some more room in the barn down there. Uh, tonight at the meeting, we've talked about this in the past. We discussed the purchase of a U T V, R T V, I think is what Kubota actually calls it. Uh, so we submitted, or we asked for, for bids from a couple, uh, different companies, and it was a state bid, so they all came in at the same price. It just depended on what um, extras we wanted, and I don't mean extras, I mean the sprayer, uh, the snow plow, um.
Accessories.
Accessories, thank you. So the cemetery board did approve the purchase of the Kubota R T V tonight. Um, it is a four-wheel drive, it's diesel, it has a cab on it. It's the only way you can get them. Um, and it is going to have a sprayer, a salt, a drop box for salt, so it doesn't spread it, it just drops it, and, uh, snow plow and a, did I say sprayer? Um, so the purpose of purchasing this R T V is to, um, streamline the, the job that Keith and the crew does down there. It, now they either have to walk the entire cemetery. This is going to save us time. Uh, we're going to be able to use the dump bed for burials instead of the dump truck in areas that we can't get into. Um, so it's going to be a multi-use, uh, tool. Um, honestly, I'm not sure how they've gotten by so many years without having one.
You'll, you'll, that's exactly what you'll wonder, what you.
Right, so.
Idea along with that.
Keep ours off the back end.
Right, and we're over eight thousand hours on the backhoe. So we're, we're looking at it for multiple, multiple purposes. Uh, we, we obviously missed, hopefully, knock on wood, the snow season by the time it gets delivered. But, uh, we'll be ready to go for next year. It'll be safer for them to salt the driveways, because currently they, it's, they don't do it safely, I guess would be a good way of saying it. We're just leaving it at that, but then get the job done. But, um, so yeah, it's going to help us all the way across the board on everything they do from burials to everyday, you can have the weed eaters in the, in the back of it and get to where you need to be and, and move on. So um, this was, we did not take a loan for this. We had money set aside that we were able to purchase this, uh, U T V for, so, um, that's all. I submitted the cemetery project to this, to Niraj, I already covered that. Uh, moving on to police, I just would add that, uh, shred day's coming up in May, so that's something to keep in mind. I think it's the first Saturday in May.
Um, it's actually May first.
Oh, it's May first, okay. But, uh, May fourth, May fourth, sorry, Star Wars Day. Well, I don't even like Star Wars. I don't know why I know that. That's not my thing. Yeah. Okay, well, actually, that conclude, concludes my report. I have, I don't have, oh, uh, next month I will have a, uh, ready a, uh, recognition of a Germantownship citizen for their lifetime of service. I just was unable to get it all accomplished in the last month, so we should be good to go for.
Just side note, be sure to remind Keith to those items as picked up.
Okay.
When they do that.
Okay.
Sometimes that's something that gets kind of let go through the cracks. I get that personal experience. You just get excited about, yeah, they sold, and the person comes and picks them up. Well, if you don't bargain, it's sold.
I've got the email.
Through gov deals, then you don't get paid.
Oh, you don't get paid? Oh, really? Well, then they also send you emails to the buyer, like, you need to pick this, because I've, I've had that call in the past.
So it's something that you might easily.
Gotcha. I appreciate the, uh, appreciate the advice.
Easy to do, it just gets forgotten, I, I think.
Yeah, and that concludes my report.
Okay, so I just want to add, uh, the best cemetery sign is on at Dalton's Funeral.
Okay, perfect.
Home, funeral, home, cemetery, there you go. Just a quick, uh, I attended the Germantown Council meeting on three, four. The highlights, the city approved expanding the community investment area to double in size. Home additions that qualify will get a tax abatement for fifteen years, so. There will be a watch party for the eclipse on April eighth at Kircher Park for one thirty till three thirty. There will be a watch party for the eclipse on April eighth at Kircher Park for one thirty till three thirty, I'm assuming that's going to be a little longer. There will be music and yard games, I guess. Uh, in a work session, there was discussion on a market street traffic study. I think the consensus was to wait until the new school building opens, as this will affect traffic in town once the present schools close. Heard Jacoby and I attended a meeting hosted by Greg Griffin, Craig Griffin, on three, seven, twenty four, to discuss small scale solar farms prior to the Jefferson Township Town Hall meeting to be held on March fourteen. Jackson, Jefferson and Jackson Township Fire Chiefs discussed concerns with fire management, management for solar arrays. Crevel County Commissioner discussed opposition to two large solar farms planned for Crevel County. Seem to recommend trying to have regulations in place before the building process begins. So, the zoning, it comes back to zoning commission will vote on the small scale regulations on March twenty six or whenever. Once the zoning commission votes, trustees will need to schedule a special meeting to approve or deny the changes. So, theoretically, if they would, if they can do it on the twenty sixth, we would, I have our meeting for Tuesday, April twenty third to, uh, make sure that we're have the correct spacing and can able to get in, get the paper, so. So, I think once.
I'm trying to think if there's any way we can change the venue instead of the date.
We've hosted meetings at a church before, when you had it, expected a large crowd.
Well, it shouldn't, shouldn't be.
Because the, the date is going to be an issue, because if we have to scoot back to following week, I'm out of town.
Can you use the, the senior center in Germantown?
Why don't you shout out, email to Kurt to see what his thoughts are?
Okay.
Because then you get the whole ten day notice if they've changed the date.
Yeah, I say, then you have to change, go back and change the newspaper notice, because if it's changing location.
But either way, if we change the date, we're going to have to do it, too.
Yeah.
Insert.
Insert go down to, you know, down to the senior center.
Yeah.
That seems easier.
That seems easier, yeah, so, so I don't know how many people with CERT training actually attract.
And they're not going to be doing, yeah, training, yeah, the hands-on training the first day, the first day.
No.
The last days.
Yeah.
A lot of that stuff is here.
Oh, in the, this, yeah.
I will contact them tomorrow.
You do it in the road garage.
That's what I was about to ask you to do.
Put CERT, CERT in the road garage.
Pull the equipment out, tables and chairs, I mean, it's not ideal, but at least you would be on premise.
Yeah.
With, with materials.
So, um. Is there a reason why we have to do a special meeting? Is there a deadline that it has to come to us?
Uh, yeah, well, there is a deadline, I think you just made this special to be able to read the whole thing.
Okay.
Versus incorporating into a regular.
Do you want to schedule it now, or do you want to wait until we know more, April twenty third?
Well, let's wait, because we'll, we'll have our next meeting be well before the CERT.
We meet on the eighth, unless you want to change it, since Mr. Holberg can't be here.
That is the solar eclipse day.
Yep.
Well, it'll be well over, well over.
It will be over, but it'll be dark again.
Yeah. So, this whole solar aggregation problem is just, it's a huge monkey wrench in it now that Archer says it will actually allow net metering, so.
Cause I'm going to need to get that confirmed from them, you said have.
I'm going to, yeah, I'll have to talk to, so, yeah, so I don't know where they, where that's coming from, because that's totally new.
Right.
From, you know, the first time that, uh, Joe Garrett was here back in twelve eleven twenty two, he said residents with solar panels should opt out if they produce more energy than they, than they use. Now, she's saying that, you know, that Archer is going to offer the net metering.
If they offer a net metering, why would you ever opt out, opt in, opt out, opt in, opt out?
Yeah, I think that does make sense. So, I'm going to try, but the deadline to opt out is Friday, so that gives us all two days, three, four days, yeah, three days. I have no idea, I don't.
But also thought you could opt out at any time.
You can opt out at any time, but, um, but the deadline to opt out at first time is, uh, is, is Friday.
So, there's a deadline, but there's not.
Well, if you don't opt out by the fifteenth, you will be in for at least a month, I think, I mean, is how it'll work.
Yeah, because you have to go through the next billing cycle.
That's correct.
So, uh, I don't know, I, I, as I say, I'll call the guy from Archer tomorrow, Andrew, to give out the information to say, hey, what's going on, telling us something totally different.
That's correct. But at the end of the day, ninety eight, ninety nine percent of our.
Well, that's, there's only eight, Archer said there's only, Archer and Trey Bell said there's only eighteen residents in the township that have that have either opted out or have solar panels.
Okay.
So, we're not talking, we're talking, let's say ninety five percent, not to minimize them, but I'm just, we've saved forty percent for ninety nine, ninety eight. Yeah, so that, and that was our goal to, you know, save as much money for as many people, so.
Had us somebody who haunts with.
Yes.
It was a township, boy, it was a.
Yeah, true, it's true.
Because I keep, uh, that's what really keeps getting, pulling me back, is, they guess keep saying township.
Well, they, they told us Butler Rural was not included because it was a co-op, but.
Well, it's, it's a different supplier, but that's not as much, it doesn't matter co-op.
We didn't even discuss Duke, though.
Well, no, we didn't.
I didn't know, yeah, I didn't. See, that's the problem, my house, one of my houses is the last house for Duke.
Uh, gotcha.
It comes in Carlisle and it runs down, uh, Hummels and those houses down through there and it comes down my lane. And the last house that Duke services is one of my houses.
Okay, okay.
So, I, what are we talking about, maybe all fifteen customers?
I noticed a couple in Germantown, middle town.
Yeah, and again, if they don't, if they've got a, which Duke is considered an alternate supplier, so they will audit, so they shouldn't, you didn't get an opt out letter.
I didn't get a letter, but I was told I had to opt out, that's why I'm confused, that's why I didn't know what was going on.
Had to opt out if you had a yes.
Okay, that's fine. That's all, I just didn't want to miss that, because news prices aren't like a yes, we, we have good prices. Yeah.
So, you, you say you should have automatically been, you can always call, it doesn't hurt to say.
Well, they're, they're extremely difficult to get in touch with.
I didn't have it, really?
Yeah, I got on the phone and I was like on the phone for like three hours trying to get a hold of somebody, just sit there and wait.
I would call Trey Bell.
That's who I called. Yeah, Duke, Duke answered the initial, Trey Bell, Trey Bell takes forever, man.
Okay, call, call Archer to say they're.
Yeah.
Uh,
Want a phone number?
As, as long as you, as long as your guys are telling me that, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, you're, you're worried about in.
I believe you. Yeah, because you should have gotten the opt out letter last.
Yeah, I didn't, didn't receive any opt out letter.
You don't want to get an opt out letter.
They just, they just sent it to all the people who were A E S customer.
Only A E S customers.
They give them, I'm not on the list, kind of like that sewer, kind of like that sewer thing that went on.
They don't even know.
On the list, so it's for them to stay out, right?
They don't show you exist.
Those, bad memories there.
Yeah.
So, that's all I have, so I'll, I'll, I'll try, but I don't know how we're going to get any information out, if they say, yeah, you can, Archer's going to offer that, that metering.
My guess is that representative didn't know what they were talking about.
Well, he's one of the, because I had talked to him, he was the next hire, you, you talk to someone who's basically just a rep and then he's the next higher up level, so he, I think he does know what's going on, but I don't know.
I guess that would be a good thing, right?
That's because he does know what's going on.
They do offer the net metering.
Well, that'd be a good thing for the people that, you know, have solar. I don't, I don't know, we'll, we'll try, I'll, I'll call him up tomorrow and see what's going on, try to get some verification, if that's what he'd said. And then I don't know how we're going to get that out to eighteen people.
Yeah.
They're seventy, sixteen.
Well, seventeen was the last number, but I had opted out the Monday before, so that may have taken me off.
Sixteen.
Do you have records in zoning of people who have solar?
Yeah, I just don't know how far back I got to go.
Because, yeah, one time we really did ask for a permit.
Plus, we don't do any permits for rooftop work.
Yeah, most of the months.
But whatever you have, at least that would be names we know for sure have solar.
Well, I can, I theoretically, I should be able to get the names from Archer, seventeen. It's kind of an intrusion of privacy there, but theoretically, we could, still, you're, you're under such a time limit. Now, even, I get all the names, they send me all the names of the seventeen, that's just a dress, you know, so.
Well, I mean, they just might have to be in for a month.
Archer may have to.
Change it.
Extend the deadline.
That's what I'm, I'm thinking, may have to extend that deadline for another.
And that'll probably only be if Trey Bell tells them they need to.
Yeah, so, I'll talk to both, I'll talk to, to Joe Garrett, Trey Bell, yeah, Andrew from Archer, so, see. Either way, it's, either way, it's a mess, yeah. I mean, yeah, uh, Joe Garrett said that it really hasn't come up again for any, so I don't think Jackson Township had any problem with Perry Township. But nobody, your son was the only person that called me about it, this was been three months ago, whether he should opt in, nobody else. Which is kind of our fault for not letting people, give me, not giving nothing.
But what's in the minutes is what we were told, that anyone on, with solar would not.
Part of it, right, yeah, so.
That's what Trey Bell told us.
Well, they should opt out, is what they told us.
They would opt out.
All right, we'll give it a go.
Did, did anybody go down and look at the erosion?
I've driven past, you can see where it's forcing it to the middle.
You can go down when it will, when it was flooding or anything.
I drove past when it was flooding, I didn't go, get out and walk it.
Well, if you, I got some pictures, it, the force of the waters pushed over into the center. And then, like I said, there were the repair was, the water's real calm there. I mean, I thought it was working exactly like it was supposed to.
So, that's all I have, any old business?
And I'd just like to thank Mark Cross, because, uh, he's our local zoning expert, as well as our energy aggregation expert, and he got all the questions tonight, so thank you for handling.
I am neither.
You're our representative trustee with solar.
Yeah, you are one with solar, so I just appreciate you.
Yeah.
I, I hope I get something done, yeah.
But other than that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So, good luck tomorrow.
We're all in favor?
Yes, return to nine oh one, I didn't ask for notes.
Your notes ready for tomorrow?